I'm going to call this meeting to order. One of our commissioners has a conflict, but she'll be here a little bit later. Wendy, as you can see, and Christine, as you can see as well. Welcome. It is time to do the roll call. Sonia.
Alrighty. Chairperson Herbst.
Here.
Commissioner Bushell.
Here.
Commissioner Gallegos.
Here.
Commissioner Plaine.
Here.
Commissioner Koffey.
Here.
Commissioner Plummer.
Here.
Absent is Commissioner Dr. She'll be joining us late. We do have a quorum.
Excellent. I also wanted to make note to welcome Kate Koffey as our latest commissioner. Welcome Kate.
Thank you.
The Economic Development Commission had a vacancy and we actually got several applicants to apply for that vacancy and Kate was one of them. So we're very glad that we had a lot of civic engagement on that. I want to call a motion to approve the minutes of...
As in May?
Well, thank you. Boy, Alex is fast. From July 13th, our last meeting. Alex motioned. Is there a second?
Second.
I think Brian got in there before Jack. Are there any corrections, additions, deletions, et cetera? All those in favor to approve the minutes say aye. Those opposed say nay. Minutes are approved. The next point on our agenda is public comment. So I wanted to ask the public that's here tonight, do we have any public that wanted to comment on something later on in the agenda, i.e. the new business? You have a comment that's...
In regards to video?
No, not in regards to the video gaming. I should have been more explicit.
...
The EDC is not used to such good attendance at their meetings, so that's why I wanted to clarify if there was anyone who wanted to make public comment for a general matter or the things that we've been talking about for months. So I'd like to save that public comment until we get to that topic later on on the agenda. Okay? So the next on the agenda is the chairperson report. I just wanted to give my small report before we get on. It's good seeing so many people here tonight. The EDC has been working on and discussing many of tonight's agendas for months. For example, the facade improvement grants for businesses, wayfinding signs, and branding or articulating our village identity. The big picture of our efforts for the past couple of years have been to lay the groundwork for communicating the story of Riverside to prospective and current businesses, to prospective and current residents, and to visitors. Aside from tonight's list of projects, I have reached out to two other commissions, the Landscape and Preservation, and the Olmsted Society to collaborate on at least one other project for 2018. Specifically, that's enhancing the entry into Riverside at Forest and First Avenue. We have a small budget of $15,000, but we think we can do something that can build on what's currently there and signal to passersby's, to people that pass through by, that there's something to explore east of First Avenue. Some additional landscaping or lighting on Forest could greatly enhance its sense of place. Any recommendation we make, all our research is then presented to our trustees for their approval. I also wanted to mention that Alex Gallegos has reached out to the zoo for another collaboration, and that's adding beautiful signage that would depict the zoo, Riverside, and possibly Metra on the railroad bridge that goes over First Avenue. The EDC will be discussing this collaboration on the November agenda. I hope you will keep following the village initiatives of improving administration, infrastructure, and community. We have a lot to discuss tonight, so let's get going. Next on our agenda are liaison reports with the A being the village board update. Liz Peters is our trustee liaison to the board and she has a report. The next on the agenda is the staff update.
Our update at this point primarily focuses on the property owned on Harlem Avenue. Cleanup has begun. The building is down. Our next stage is going to be the soil remediation, which should be starting here in the next couple of weeks. And then we will have to wait for IEPA to provide us with an NFR letter stating that the site is clean. So we are getting close to completing that. Also, we did adopt the business district sales tax for that business district out there. So there will be a 1% additional sales tax added to specific sale items per the Illinois State statute for that area. That money is then earmarked for any improvements in that business district. And that will not be effective, I believe, until January 1st. So there's certain timing. So that won't go into effect until next year in 2018. Other reports, not too much else at the moment. We did get plans in for a build-out for a new architecture firm that is going in the Arcade Building. So we have part of, another part of that building being filled. They aren't taking the front section, so they're going to be in the back of the building. But, you know, that space is starting to get filled up. And that is about all I have for the moment.
Any questions on those topics? Excellent. Oops. No. Our next report comes from the Chamber of Commerce update. Alex is a twofer for us. He's a chamber member and also a commissioner, and he's our liaison to them.
The Chamber really has no official report. However, one of our Chamber members, who is like Raj, will be hosting the annual car show on Sunday 24th. And that starts at 9:00 and it ends at 5:00.
And that's the last...
We expect about 275 cars annually.
That's the last one for the season, right?
Yes.
Excellent. The big one. It's a lot of fun. Anything else?
That's it.
Excellent. Sounds like fun. Any questions for Alex? Alright. We'll go to the next item, which is regarding our central business district. The facade improvement grant application review and recommendation to staff for Riverside Foods. We have been thrilled that Riverside Foods has submitted an application for a grant. They've been our first applicant and maybe only so far?
Only so far.
And only so far. But that's okay. Do we want Peter to address us?
Yeah, we can have Peter go over the project.
I mean, we have all your materials, but...
Wonderful. Thank you for welcoming me and congrats to Kate. I know personally how much you care about the betterment of Riverside, so that's great. Thanks for putting this grant application together. It was, it really was the turnkey to put this maybe to the forefront of our improvements, where we've been focusing mostly internally. This was, gave this ability to look on the outside facade as well. So part of the application for this year, what we hope to get done with the help of the EDC and the village would be to do some repairs on the outside facade, both on the parking lot side and the street-facing facade, and then paint as well, hoping to change the color and activate the building a little bit more. It's open to suggestions, really, whatever's the most contextual. And the renderings is kind of a sage, sage green, which we felt kind of tied in nicely with Riverside. And then in addition to that, as part of this, we'd be looking to do some lighting, LED lighting of more of a natural hue though, more than the white hue on the facade, on the street-facing facade side, both illuminating the front of our building and the sidewalk in front. It's angled goose neck lighting, so that's what we're hoping to do. And the rendering that you have shows also some signage. Wasn't looking to do that this year or ask for this to be part of the application process, just kind of show in the direction, the direction that we would like to go and show it kind of as a, as a whole picture there. So if there's any questions about it, I'd be more than happy to answer that. And I do, like again, appreciate you entertaining this application. Really excited about it.
Any questions for Peter?
Yes.
I think it's really going to draw more attention, and it looks like you had some repair work to do anyway.
Yeah.
So can it do both at once, which is great?
Yeah, yeah, we're hoping to. Absolutely. And like I said, we're open to suggestions on colors, really, and hope to continue improving our business as well. We just finished improvements on the inside of our building just two, three days ago with a number of new coolers and smaller remodels around the store, so...
You have a quick question. You said you're thinking about changing the signage, but that would be put off until next year?
Yeah. It might be too big of an undertaking to do everything at once this year. So there was, the signage indicated and there's what we would, the direction we'd like to head towards, which is kind of a brushed aluminum look to it. And so the signage that's currently up there, we wouldn't be touching at this point.
I mean, I guess I didn't notice. I forgot. As far as when you want to start and...
As soon as we had approval and, you know, the blessing of the EDC, I would make the phone call next week to get to line up our contractor and see how soon we can start work. Obviously, you know, we would want to do this before the weather changes too much on us, so as soon as, I would like to move forward as soon as possible.
As soon as approved?
Yes.
And get your contractor lined up?
Yes.
Great. Any other questions?
No, I'd just like to say that I'm not putting down the facade as it is because it's nice, it's clean, it's been Riverside forever. But what you're looking to do here is really great. It's, it really just elevates you to the next level, making it look like just more of a piece of Riverside that's kind of like fitting in with the whole new signage concepts that we're looking at. So it's, it's a nice segue to having the businesses start to take some of that, that look to what they're doing. So it's great.
I see. I'd like to know more about the direction of the signage you'd be looking for that's best fit for the village in the future. I see, yeah.
Do you, any other discussion before we motion to approve the application?
I make a motion to approve it.
Second.
We'll put Jack on this second.
Shall I call a roll?
Call a roll.
Commissioner Gallegos?
Aye.
Commissioner Bushell?
Aye.
Commissioner Plaine?
Aye.
Commissioner Koffey?
Aye.
And Chairperson Herbst?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Keep closing. I'm sorry.
I'll just... My arm was covering him. Commissioner Plummer? Motion passes.
Motion passes. Congratulations. We're looking forward to the project being done, going, going, and all.
And so this is, and our total fund that we have available for this year is...
We have, I believe, $30,000 budgeted for this year. So this is the max, takes the maximum amount that we can provide, which is $5,000.
Right.
So that's still leaving us with $25,000 for any future projects that come in this year. So provided we get a few more, there's the potential for us to fund a couple of more. Anything he wants to do next year, he'll have to come back before you next year. We do have it in the budget. Budget hasn't been approved yet, but we are, we are budgeting it for next year as well.
So keep pushing the facade program while funds are still available to other business Now, we, the next item on our agenda is we've been discussing wayfinding, signage, design and locations, and believe you, we've spent a lot of time on this. So we're just now getting to the point where, I think we're getting down to the final discussion.
So I've got the design that we can switch over to as well.
Good, good. Sarah's going to...
Get that up for me.
Put it up so everybody can look at it. And the signage is incorporating the logo work, the style guides that we worked on last year. That's not the wayfinding sign though.
No.
That is later on on our agenda, when we have our marketing agency.
Can you just hit escape? There we go.
That's it.
There we go. Let's see, is this connected then? Think up at the top, there's a, place screen mode. It's a little slow today, so... There we go. Good enough for me.
Excellent. So yes, this gives you an idea of how we're working on look and feel of our logo within signage.
Wayfinding.
Wayfinding signs. We would, we've been wanting to do wayfinding signs for a long time because Riverside can be a little confusing to us as well as people outside of Riverside who are trying to find us. So instead of just doing a bland sign, we want, which, you know, still costs money, we decided to do a pretty sign for, for the, you know, same effort. But then we have to figure out what to put on the signs and where we put them. But as you can see, we put our logo, the new logo on there that we created last year, and elements of that logo are, are on the pole with the branch and the leaves. Sonia has compiled all of our thoughts from the last couple meetings on locations, and I'm trying, I have so many papers here tonight, let me get to that.
This one.
This one, yeah. So currently, we've got, did you want to go one by one through these?
We'll give a brief higher level overview, real quick. One of the things we needed to do was for this to go before the Preservation Commission for a review, as this is going in our public right of ways, which are part of our national landmark designation. So I took the design and the proposed locations that we had discussed to the Preservation Commission for their August meeting and took your recommendations there. So they reviewed this, and their recommendations, feelings on this were that they liked the design. They did recommend approval of the signed design. They were happy with that. You guys had had some discussion about not going the Gateway Monument route at First and Forest. They concurred with that recommendation. They didn't feel that the Gateway Monument was necessarily appropriate there. However, they did agree that some sort of additional landscaping or hardscaping near the existing monuments that are out there to establish some sort of sense of place would be appropriate. They also recommended perhaps adding streetlights, possibly with banner poles along Forest Avenue leading to, along Forest Avenue leading from First Avenue to the bridge. That could also kind of help make that sense of place and make a more inviting open entrance into the village, draw people down Forest Avenue. They also reviewed the, let's see if I can get to it from here, the Business Directory sign as well. The locations that we were thinking of for that would be one by the green parking lot and the other one somewhere on the south side of the tracks, hopefully maybe closer to the train station. They were okay with the one being by the parking lot. However, they requested that when we do have a location selected for the south side of the tracks, especially since we were looking at possibly either in front of Township Hall or the train station, that they review that with them being landmark buildings and the scale of the sign. They were concerned the scale might not be appropriate, so they are not necessarily in favor of it in those locations and would like to review that further. At this point, since we do not have funding for doing the intersection improvements yet at Blooming Bank and Riverside and Quincy, like we've been trying to, it is in our capital budget, we are trying to make room for it as part of those plans, but since we don't have funding, I don't know like a timeline on when that would happen, so we don't really have a place to put that sign yet. So I think it would be fine for that to be a future capital project versus part of this overall wayfinding thing, if we can at least get the one over in the green parking lot. So I didn't necessarily see an issue with that, but that's, you know, you guys can make your own recommendation to the village board on that. We have four different types of signage that we're looking at. You can see here, we have the Gateway Monument sign, which is the direction that we're not going in for that. We have Gateway Pole signs that would be out at First and Forest, Displayings and 26th, Berry Point and Fairbank, Harlem Near East Burlington, and Harlem and Long Common. Then you have the sort of wayfinding directional signage that will be placed. It's going to be directing people to the various business district areas in town. These would be placed, some a little bit further away from the downtown and then some in the downtown. Locations we're looking at again on those are Woodside and Maplewood, Kimbark and Forest, Forest and Long Common, East Burlington near the green parking lot, Riverside and East Quincy, Burling and Riverside, Riverside and Lawton, Long Common and the Evelyn Kent area, East Quincy and Harlem possibly if there is room and budget allows. Again, that's a public road, or not public road, obviously public road. It's an I dot road, and so there's specific hurdles that have to happen on that. And then Joliet and Ogden, again, I dot approval, especially since that intersection isn't actually in the village of Riverside, so I expect there would be additional hurdles to getting that one done since it isn't in our, in our jurisdiction. Next up, we have the parking lot directional signs, so this is letting people know where to get to the parking. We're looking at Kimbark and Forest, Forest and East, Long Common and East Burlington, Riverside and Blooming Bank, Burling and Riverside, and Berry Point and Blooming Bank. These signs would be pointing out where the commuter lots and the public parking are. These would also be utilized to provide some bike route directionals as well, as appropriate. And then we have, last but not least, parking lot signs for our public parking lots and commuter parking lots. So this would be for parking lot one by the train station, parking lot eight, which is kind of behind Metal Knights and Jeff's Auto over there in that area, and also next to Metal Knights. We'd also be looking at the parking lots that are next to Riverside Bank and Athletico, and then the green parking lot. And then also similar signage then would be placed in front of the municipal lots, but those would say employee parking only, just to make sure that it's, keeps in with the design of the downtown, as opposed to the signs that we currently have out there that are not necessarily the most aesthetically pleasing signs, but then would still communicate that this is not public parking, it's for municipal employees. And so those are the different signs that we have. I did provide you with specific things that would go on each of those signs. I hope you had a chance to review them. If there's any that seem like they are way off, please let me know. What we're looking for here is for a formal recommendation to go to the village board for their meeting next week, so that we can start moving to the construction design for this and get them manufactured and try to get them installed this year, since it is a 2017 budget item. So what we're looking for here, as I have stated in the staff report, is recommendations on eliminating the Gateway Monument and the possibility of other gateway features like lighting and landscaping, recommendation on the gateway, wayfinding, and Business Directory signage, and the sign locations. So those are the things that we're looking for your formal recommendation to the village board on. And again, here's just to briefly go over, this is the Business Directory sign. So it incorporates the logo, the same kind of color scheme as the other ones. You can see with the logo, it's a little bit taller than your standard six-foot tall person, but we're looking at a three-by-five sign, and it would have the map of the downtown on it and a little directory on the side to kind of identify where the different businesses are. Each building is kind of documented with a letter, and then each business would have that building number, you know, next to it. So it allows for a little bit more flexibility that way in being able to change names. We also have included on there, you know, you know, this way to Harlem Avenue, Harlem Avenue, this way to the zoo, so people can kind of orient themselves, oh, I'm only a half a mile from the zoo, or, you know, I can get out to Harlem Avenue that way. But it has the whole central business district in there, so...
And Sonia, one question. How easy is it to change names or add names?
Well, we'll be working with Point B. They seem to indicate that there are ways that you almost kind of have, for lack of a better word, almost like stickers, so that you can overlay on there. If a business name changes, you can put that on there to make it blank until you have a new business name. We also did leave room in there that you could also just reprint out that section and put a new one in, and there's kind of, we left a little bit of buffer in there, so as new businesses come in, as you can see, it doesn't go all the way to the bottom. So we can just reprint out that whole panel and have that relayed in there if needed as new businesses come in. So it wouldn't necessarily happen every time, but perhaps on an annual basis if it needs to be updated, then we can just print out that panel and have that relayed on there. If you want to come to the podium so the people at home can see you?
Quick question. Nick Lambros, 276 Maplewood Road. Regarding the signs, are they going to be illuminated at night? It's just strictly, okay, so...
No illumination.
No illumination, okay.
Our usual umbi lighting.
On that note, just for the downtown, I believe we are in the process of turning those over to LED lights. You know, we received some grant money for that from ComEd to be able to make those turnovers, so I think that is rolling out over the next couple of years. So hopefully the illumination levels, at least in the downtown area, will be a little bit different than what is currently there with the metal halide lights that we have there. So it'll be a little bit different. I don't know, it'll be significantly brighter, but the illumination will be a little bit different just because it's a different type of light to be an LED light.
Any other questions? I know this is all old news for us because we've been pouring over this for meetings, and we've tried to pare down the list of locations of signage, again, to keep the budget in mind, but also not to go sign crazy, to be effective, but not too many signs. So, yeah, Jack?
Was there, was there any further talk about having possible sign at First Avenue and 31st Street where people exit the zoo to turn onto First Avenue, either north or south? Because that was the one area that we had talked about.
That is true. If you guys want to add that in there, again, budgetary wise, maybe we not, you know, at this point, we're getting a little heavy on the gateway signs, so we may need to start kind of looking at prioritizing which ones we want to get in first, and then maybe we need to branch out. So if that's one we feel like should be a priority to start out with, you know, and then does, you know, Harlem Avenue come later, or does 26th Street come later? Kind of trying to gauge that.
Yeah, I had that as a note also, Jack, that...
So if you guys want to add that to the list, and then maybe that's...
To prioritize, you know, because I think that's an important intersection as well. Most people, when they approach the zoo, are coming from 31st Street, and so we'd want to make sure they know we're over here, too.
Oh, yeah, just if people are leaving the zoo, maybe capture some of that traffic for restaurants or downtown stores.
So it sounds like that would be a good base, too, if we have to kind of wait, you know, do it in different ways, so, yeah.
Because we've had to prioritize basically all of our expenses for this big project. You know, we did some last year so that we could spread out the expenses more this year, so we'll have more next year, so duly noted.
Just one other note, when, when I sat in on the preservation meeting, when we talked about possibly doing some lighting along the bridge and Forest Avenue, I think that's something that should at least be brought up and pursued, because I really, if you look at it now, there are three very kind of white ugly lights that just kind of overhang over the street.
The Cobra Lights.
If we could incorporate some sort of signage or change there so that as people came in, it was a nicer entry into town, whether it was the lighting on the bridge or something just prior to, I think that that could be significant. The more I've noticed that at night as I drive back and forth, the more I realize that it really should be addressed. If we're going to be doing all this dressing up of the signs throughout town, that's one area that I think we neglected to really look at because it's mostly on that.
Well, and I also think for, a lot of people actually do walk that street at night, you know, whether they're going to the high school or just walking around town, and it gets pretty dark over the bridge. or just walking around town. And it gets pretty dark over the bridge, you know, so.
Well, bridge lighting is in our budget for this year. I've been working with the Preservation Commission on that project. So we are moving forward with that. Plans have been sent to I dot for their approval because I think they have to approve all bridge projects. So I've not heard if that application has been approved yet, but once it is, we've already ordered the lights and then we can move forward with getting that installed. So hopefully before the end of the year, there will be four lights on the bridge. And they will be our, you know, our Riverside standards, but they will be an LED light versus the gas lamp. Just for maintenance purposes, it's a little easier.
So that's an approval process now.
So, yeah, so we're in a holding pattern at this point, but hopefully those will be getting installed before the end of the year. So any additional lighting then from that point towards First Avenue, we could include as part of that discussion on increasing, you know, changing the gateway features at First and Forest with landscaping or adding lighting to that. And that was kind of Preservation Commission's recommendation as well, as they thought lighting would be a good touch around there in addition to some nice landscaping to kind of make the pillars that are out there have more of a sense of place than just kind of sitting there as they do now. Invite people in a little bit more with the intersection.
Any other comments or additional thoughts? I did go through them all to make sure that all of them got typed up and included in the list. So it seems like a, it's a very thorough job, exactly.
I try.
She does. Are you ready to make the recommendation to?
The Village Board?
What?
You're making a recommendation to the Village Board?
To the, yeah, to the Village Board.
So moved.
You are just on top of things. Is there a second? Keith?
Sure, I'll second. There we go.
I waited.
Since you, yeah, you stole the last one.
All those in favor of the recommendation, say aye.
Aye.
All those not in favor, say nay. I didn't think we had to do a voice phone.
Alrighty.
Probably not doing things appropriately.
I'll put together that recommendation and this will be on the Village Board agenda next week. So if any of you want to attend that, please feel free to, in case the Board has any questions.
Or why were we thinking this? We can help.
That would be nice as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, that's exciting. It's going to just, again, add to the attractiveness of this town. The next item on our agenda was to continue our discussion on brand articulation. Our agi, our brand agency, marketing agency reps are stuck in traffic on the way back from Milwaukee, Point B Agency. So we're going to put them later on in the agenda, basically when they show up later. And that's old business. So we are going to go on to new business, which is the discussion and recommendation to the Village Board on allowing video gaming slash gambling. We've been asked by the Board of Trustees to make a recommendation regarding this topic. Mr. Brian Carroll of Molly's Public House requested that the Board revisit this topic at the July twentieth Board Meeting. This topic was previously brought to the Board in November of two thousand and fifteen. After that time, the EDC held an informational forum on March twenty-second, two thousand and sixteen. The forum was well-attended and filmed by Riverside TV, so you can find it in the archives. The issue wasn't pursued by business owners again until recently, so now we're addressing the topic at the commission level. I see Mr. Carroll here. So seeing as I said we would put our public comment, and we have Wendy here, so she came just in time for new business. Seeing as we'll have public comment, but I think, seeing as Mr. Carroll requested that the Board of Trustees revisit it, we'll have him have his comment first and, and any other parties that you want to comment during that time. And then we'll have public comment after that. I've received twenty-three letters of public comment. And then we also have some people here in person as well. And then the commissioners will, will deal with the, with the recommendation. Alright?
Alright, so just ask if you do plan on making a comment, if you could please fill out one of our witness forms just so we get the correct spelling of your name when we do the minutes later on. Sarah has them over there at that table. If you could just fill them out and give them to her just so we have them.
Yeah, we need your name.
But you'll speak at the podium over there when it's, when it's time.
Did you want to give any other background before?
Oh, sure, I can give some, just some brief background.
Sonya will give just a little bit more background.
So currently, the Village Ordinance does not allow for video gaming. Simulated video gaming devices are specifically prohibited in our village, our municipal code. As Christine went over, there has been some discussion, but no action has been taken to overturn that ordinance at this time. The Village Board did ask this commission to provide them with their recommendation on whether that should change or not, so whether we should continue to prohibit it or start to open up to allow it. Briefly going over what the state of Illinois rules are. So video gaming terminals are permitted at any establishment where alcohol is drawn, poured, mixed, or otherwise served for consumption on premises. Also included are licensed fraternal and veteran establishments and truck stops. There won't be truck stops in town, so I don't think we have to worry about that. There are a maximum of five terminals permitted per establishment. The entrance to the terminal areas must be in view of at least one employee, owner, manager. Establishments that are within one thousand feet of a facility licensed under the Illinois House, sorry, Horse Racing Act or at the home dock of a riverboat are not permitted to have video gaming. We don't meet those thresholds. Establishments that are within one hundred feet of a school or church are not permitted to have video gaming. We do have some areas where that could be an issue. And then also where two or more adjacent businesses appear to the Illinois Gaming Board to be a single business or are operated by the same or co-mingled ownership, the Illinois Gaming Board may limit those businesses to the maximum number of video gaming terminals for one establishment. There are restrictions for licensing locations within malls as well, and they define those as a building or adjoining buildings with four or more units. And they will not grant an application to become a licensed video gaming location within a mall if the Gaming Board determines that granting the application more likely than not caused terminal operators or licensed video gaming locations to operate terminals in two or more licensed video gaming locations as a single video gaming operation. Additionally, there's restrictions on non-home rule communities, which we are. So we would not be allowed to impose any fees for the operation of a video gaming terminal in excess of twenty-five dollars per year. So I think some of the background materials I gave you provided some other communities that are home rule communities and so they are allowed to have higher fees than that. So there are some communities that may have hundred-dollar or thousand-dollar fees for each terminal. That is not something that we have the right to do. We would be maxed out at twenty-five. There is a thirty percent tax on the net terminal income. The local government receives one-sixth of that tax collected. So that would be the village's portion of the tax. The rest goes to the state. The seventy percent goes to the business owner and however they determine to split it with the terminal operators. So that is not income that comes to the village. So we only get the portion of the tax portion. So we did a survey of surrounding communities in the Chicagoland area. So you've got like Bartlett, Bloomingdale, Carroll, Stramdarian, also looked out to Galena for like a historical town. We have Hoffman Estates, Long Grove, Roselle, Tinley Park, Westmont for their video gaming. We also provided you with a list of all of the villages in Cook County, DuPage County, Little Canadian County that do not allow video gaming. So it's not like we're the only village in Cook County that does not allow video gaming, just so you kind of have that perspective on that. I provided you with the background with what some of the different rules and regulations are that people have. Some will tie it to specific liquor licenses, some will have additional restrictions on signage and things like that. Just so you kind of have that as your background. As I stated before, the village is looking for your recommendation. I provided you with a lot of background information. I hope you were able to read through it, you know, trying to provide you with the tools to be able to make an informed recommendation. As we said, we do have Mr. Carroll here, who is the one that brought to the Board's attention again to see if he's willing to, if the Board is willing to entertain this idea. So I'd be happy to open it up to Brian to provide his perspective and then we can open it up to the public to give their feedback and then the commission can kind of discuss that feedback amongst themselves and kind of see which direction you want to go in and then make a formal recommendation if you feel like you're comfortable tonight making that. Alright?
Okay. Brian Carroll, how's it going, guys? I'm just here to ask, as far as the video gaming is concerned, if it would be allowed in the village. We are looking to make improvements on the property, improvements on our, our business and improvements on my private life, too, as well. But this is a source of revenue that would help us along the way. So we're struggling a bit right now with the construction of the street for the past year. So things are a little tense right now. So that's about all I got, really, so.
Any questions for Mr. Carroll?
We get some after. We gotta kind of digest all this.
Yeah, we will.
Do you want to speak now or?
Sure.
Alright. My name's John Filer, employed by American Video Gaming, which is a licensed terminal operator. My parents actually own the company, so we're the, we're the company that owns the machines. We're one of many of them, but we're working with Brian to help hopefully get the village in. I don't want to debate what the morals of gaming are, I just want to go over some facts. This was passed by the state five years ago to help, part of the Capitol Bill to help improve revenue and put people back to work. Over the last twelve months, the state has generated three hundred and seventy million in tax revenue for them and the municipalities have brought in sixty-one million dollars. So it's helping to, the state that needs money is helping to bring in money. Right now, there's currently sixty-one hundred licensed locations throughout the state with twenty-seven thousand machines. So it's everywhere. It's a, it's very rampant, it's very big. It's extremely regulated. Every, every distributor, seller, machines, operator, location, employees are all licensed with background checks. We're actually audited once every three months by the Gaming Board all of our financial statements. So it's extremely regulated and it's all public information. It helps the small businesses. We've heard comments in other towns, like, why do they need this to survive? Like, the, the big bars are surviving, like Buffalo Wild Wings are there. The fact is, it's, chains can survive without it, but a lot of the small businesses really struggle. For instance, if someone's going to go to Brian's and let's say they're going out with a group of three, three couples and one couple wanted to play video gaming and they wanted to go in an Irish pub, they're going to end up going to either Ryan's Public House or Irish Times in Brookfield because they allow machines. So not only do you lose the video gaming revenue, you lose your entire, the whole group of people going out. Another thing I know you guys discussed is that we can limit this, the towns can limit this. In other towns, they've limited to maybe two or four locations based on how many liquor licenses you have in town. Where they have to hold liquor license for one or two years. So you're not getting the, we don't like the gaming cafes, no one likes the gaming cafes. But you guys can limit it through, limiting the amount of time they can hold licenses, they must serve food, square footage requirements. You can require the locations to build a separate room so they can't even be seen from the street and not allow any signage. So maybe there's some type of compromise. I know there's a lot of people here who are going to speak against it at some point. So I'm just kind of giving a little heads up. The fact, the biggest thing is just trying to let these companies, these businesses operate on a level playing field. Thanks.
Sure. Can you please come to the podium?
Oh, yes, yes.
Thank you, Kim.
Alright, hi. I just had a quick question about what you said, you threw out some numbers. Could you repeat those numbers?
It's all public information.
Was it three eighty or something like that?
Three hundred and seventy million was the thirty percent of the state's revenue. The machines themselves have generated over a billion dollars in revenue in the last twelve months. This can all be substantiated on the Illinois Gaming Board's website. The municipalities get five percent. So the state gets twenty-five percent, the towns get five percent. So the town split was sixty-one thousand, sixty-one million. And actually, I got, I, I didn't know this was going to be such a big thing. I thought it was going to be a smaller thing. So I made some information up here of surrounding towns. So some towns in the area of Forest View, Hodgkins and Stickney, they only have like two to five places. And they, for example, Forest View, they made ninety-five thousand dollars last year off their machines. Now, I know earlier you guys were talking about the signage, that you might have to prioritize. Maybe this revenue can be put towards some of that stuff or improvements in the village. Other towns like Countryside, they put it in the property tax fund to help reduce people's property taxes. So this money can be used for anything the village wants it to be used.
Yeah, it is easy to find all of the gaming revenue on the Illinois Gaming Board site.
My question specifically, is that from the Illinois Gaming Commission or is that from the Illinois Gaming Machines Operators Association?
No, the commission. It's from the Gaming Board.
It's from the Illinois Gaming Board's website. The I T V is actually, they regulate all the riverboats, too. And you can do a report for any time period. So I just ran it for the last twelve months. Actually, I ran it right here, sitting right here. I pulled right up on my phone. So it's three hundred and seventy million is what they made the last twelve months on it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Actually, I was wondering if I could ask a question also. You know, I mean, I'm assuming you're here because you, you know, kind of see, you know, the opportunity for.
Obviously, I have a vested interest in this, yeah.
And so I guess my, my question is, is I mean, what, what type of, what, what kind of volume would you expect the machine and Riverside to do? Just, you know.
Based on surrounding towns, the average location right now generates, I always talk the operator split, which is fifty-fifty.
I'm kind of wondering, yeah, like, how much you would see going into the machine and coming out?
The average location, the, the towns make about eleven thousand dollars a year. But based on Riverside and what we've seen in other towns like Westmont, Hodgkins, some of these towns that aren't so, like in Berwin, they allowed seventy places to have it. They kind of ruined it. The places since, I, I look at you guys, I think you guys have maybe seven or eight eligible places, possibly something around there. But I don't think only a few of them would put it in. So I think you guys would be earning between like maybe twelve and eighteen thousand per location, per year. And I can show you, we can go on the Gaming Board's website and find some similar locations.
And you said that was, sorry to interrupt, you said that was the village's?
That was the village's.
Portion?
So like, for example, like Brian's, I know, he knows Ryan's Public House really well. Based on her revenue, I believe the Village of Brookfield made around like fourteen thousand dollars. Don't quote me on this. I can actually pull it up here, but I think that's how much they made the last twelve months, based on their revenues. So I think that would be a good gauge.
And what would be the amount for a business itself?
The business, we're hoping, I mean, the average location on the business end, they make between fifteen, eighty thousand dollars a year.
Per machine, per?
Oh, that's a base of a five machines. And that's their thirty-four percent. So the state, we make that same cut and the state makes slightly less. Because it's basically, the state gets thirty percent and then it's thirty-four point six-three-six-two-five percent for the operator, thirty-four point six-three-six-two-five percent for the location. Because there's a company called Scientific Games that, this company was hired specifically to monitor every single machine. So in every single location, they actually bring in a computer to monitor the five machines. So the state's in constant contact with the machines. They can actually on-request disable a machine within a minute. It'll actually shut off, this minute that his liquor license goes off, the machines will shut off, so they can't be played during nine hours. Let's say Brian got a violation for some reason, they could remotely shut his machines off, just like that. So this is completely regulated. It's one hundred percent in control by the state. The reason they actually added, and I know you read about the gaming law rules, it's because it was starting to get out of, out of hand in towns like Berwin where they, they got a thousand dollars per machine. So they kind of, my opinion, they just allowed as many places as they could because they're making five thousand dollars a location just on the licensing. So they, what they do with the video gaming laws is, the Gaming Board's also trying to limit it so it's not, everyone has it. This was passed to help the small businesses, not to help the big corporations like D O Ds and V Ds coming to try to take the market. It's just to help existing businesses try to survive.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, I think we're ready for other public comment. If you want to make public comment, go to the microphone.
You got all emailed. You got all emails, I guess.
Good evening. Nick Lambros, 276 Maplewood Road. I've been a resident here in Riverside for 16 years. I'm shocked that nobody else has stepped up to fill out a form and be here personally. We're being, I'm being bombarded. I just found out about this meeting just through some emails that have been going around. I believe you mentioned you've got 23 letters, I assume.
Actually, 25 now.
25. I'd like to know if they are, they are in favor or opposing the gaming plan. You might not be able to provide that answer now.
I'll get, I'll get to that.
Okay, sounds good. So I obviously have a problem with this. I, I don't, I don't like the idea of our community embracing the idea of having gambling or gaming inside our borders. We sit here and we micromanage sign assignment and colors and style and leaves and what we're going to put on these beautiful signs because we want to sell the outside before we sell the inside. And yet, what we're doing is, we're suggesting that we're going to be like, you brought up Hodgkins. We're not a Hodgkins. We're not a countryside. We're not a Stickney. This is Riverside. This is a way of life. We are a historic district. To, to suggest that we're going to bring in, even entertain the thought, is mind boggling. I, and, and I'm, and if I'm going off on a tangent here is because people should have the opportunity, more than this, this little committee here to, to talk about this. If it's being recommended, it's benefiting a handful of people. These five or six or seven businesses. On Maplewood alone, where I reside, there are 61 houses with an average tax bill of over $20,000 per household. I'm not prepared to live in a community where I'm paying $20,000 because I want to live in a community that has good schools and provides a sense of history and gives a, a flavor that, I moved here for that purpose. If I want video gaming, if somebody wants it, I can go to Berwyn. Has anybody here gone to the Lucky Dog in Berwyn that has video gaming during the day and in the evening? Right now, if you were to go to Lucky Dog, there are groups of people standing there like hungry hounds, waiting to get to the next machine. It's not benefiting the community. $13,000 is, or 14, or 15, or $20,000 in the grand scheme of things, is, is an amount that we shouldn't even be looking at. Because what is it going to cost us in monitoring these devices? The police force, if there are issues with, with conflicts that take place within businesses with the, we'll call it the element that typically is attracted by this, these, these gaming and gambling venues. I, I just, I, I, I just don't understand how the village is even considering it. And at the same, at the same time, I want to say, who's going to make this final decision? Is it the Board of Trustees?
Yes, it'll be the Board of Trustees.
Why is it that the Board of Trustees should be allowed to make a decision for 8,000 residents? Why don't we put it up on a referendum?
That's something that you can, that is an option that you have? What's another option?
Well, I, I think it's, I think it should be, and have we explored and have we looked at the studies that are suggesting maybe that this might not be a good idea? Have we looked at those studies? Actually presented them to the population of Riverside openly? How did this meeting happen and we didn't know about it? I'm the only person here out of 8,000 people. I can't be the only one that's opposed to it.
Well, it was discussed at a village board meeting. They asked for an EDC recommendation. There was an article in the paper about it. It's, it's been mentioned, so this was their next regular meeting. We said it would be on their next regular meeting. It always happens on the second Thursday of the month.
As neighbors of Riverside, we put our trust in you, village government and trustees, to make the right decision. We hope you do that. And it should be put on a referendum. It should not be left up to seven people to make the decision for all of us.
I think it was in the newspaper twice, wasn't it? Any additional public comment?
Well said.
Name?
Eric Sunstrom, 375 Uve Dale Road, 345 East Burlington, where I have my office. Pardon my voice, I am getting over laryngitis right now, so I sound like a frog. The video gaming thing is kind of interesting. I, I see stuff going on around town and I call it reverse NIMBYism. NIMBY, not in my backyard, okay? Well, what it is, is you don't want it in your backyard, you want it in somebody else's backyard. We're surrounded by video gambling. The argument that it's going to draw people in is a straw man, okay? If they're over there in North Riverside, they're over in Berwyn, why would they come here? Also, I go to a lot of restaurants in the area and the vast majority of the people that I see at these places are the gray hairs, okay? The older people that have disposable income. They're sitting around, they're waiting for their table, or they're just done. They go in, throw some money into the slots. You know, that's the way it goes. That, it's, you're not going to get riffraff coming into town to play video gambling at Choo Choo, at Molly's, wherever it shows up, okay? The other thing is, is that people say, oh, what about the history of Riverside? And, you know, we, we're a special town and whatnot. Actually, look into the history of Riverside. Couple doors down over here was the Riverside Hotel. Riverside Hotel in the 1800s had a gambling parlor in it. And there was another part of town that had a house of ill repute that was in town too. So that's just another thing. And a lot of people don't like that, but that's what actually was going on in this town, okay? The last thing is, is that this is a business that people are trying to do and you're, you're like basically taking away revenue from them. And some of these places are hurting right now, just because of the economy, because of construction going on around here. So if you sit there and make a decision that hurts businesses and puts them out of business, what's going to come in and fill the void? You know, maybe nothing. But once again, you're basically not leveling the field. You're making other places around here, outside of the town, being able to get money from people that are willing to spend a few bucks on the video gambling, but it's not going to destroy the town. That's a crock. My whole point being is, is that when you are, actually, the only people that get elected in this town are village board people. The rest of you are all volunteers, okay? And you listen, you decide, and the thing is, is you've all been picked by the board to be sort of nonpartisan, is the best way to put it. And then you make your best decision, you put it in front of the board, and then the board gets to listen to everybody and have all the worms in their ears about what's going on. And then they'll make a decision off of that. They're elected. But I'll tell you one thing, being on commissions myself and knowing people that are on the board itself, it's a thankless job. They're putting in tons of hours, they're not getting any money. And sitting there saying that, we don't want you to make the decisions, we want to make the decisions for you. Maybe, but the thing is, is that they're trying to do it in the most informed way for everybody in the town, not just one small group. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Michael Foley, 411 Selborn in Riverside. To your point, I used to live on Maplewood Road. Lived there for a long time, I lived in this town for 54 years. My tax bill is higher than the average tax bill on Maplewood. I'm neither here nor there about video gambling. I'm here about trying to help a business like Brian's, who's not going through a good time right now. He's been affected by construction, a project that I think languished very long. Alex, you lived in front of it for a long time too. There are a lot of businesses that have come into town and we have done things to help them. We look at La Barra, we gave them quite a bit of money to come into town. We've developed a new business district over on Harlem with the hopes that that'll help himself. Brian pretty much came into town and did it himself, with no help from the village. I'm about trying to find things to help businesses in this town. And if video gambling is important to him, I think we need to hear him out. Again, I'm neither here nor there on video gambling. I don't have a position on it. It's really not important to me and I'm not personally a gambler. I go to Lucky Dog, I eat there all the time. I really don't pay attention to the people that are throwing their money away in a machine. Don't go to Vegas, I don't go to the riverboat. I'm about trying to find and looking at you guys as the Economic Development Committee, finding ways, creative ways to help businesses that might be hurting. And if it isn't video gambling, then what else can it be? What can we do to help the businesses that we haven't helped in the beginning, who came there on their own, to try and get them to thrive and live in this town? I don't go into Brian's place a lot. Again, not a gambler and I'm not a huge drinker. Really not that much fun. But I do like to go there and, and have lunch and I try to support them as much as I can. I think that this issue is, I agree with what I've heard from both sides of the fence. Why do you need it to support your business? Drawing the wrong element into town? And that, that is a whole nother story. Before you, the last meeting I came at, we were talking about fishing, picnicking and canoeing in our town. And it seems like this town is really hung up on getting the wrong element in town. And I'm really, I've had it, I've absolutely had it, all right? This town was here because of the river. And if there was gambling back when Olmsted came into town, and there was, and there were a lot of other things that people didn't agree with, that happened all around us. We cannot shutter people from coming into this town. We want signs to tell people to come to town. Are we only allowing certain people to come into town? Do we only want certain people to come here and walk through our parks? Do we only want certain kinds of people to have a picnic in our park? Or go to Brian's place? I think we have to look at the bigger picture and we have to help businesses that are failing. And whether you allow them to have a machine or not, we got to do something. You know, I don't want to lose Brian. I don't want to lose businesses. I don't want businesses to be afraid not to, not to come here because we have gambling or come here because we have gambling. That's up to them. But it's your job and the job of the village to help businesses thrive in this town. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. No, I think we need to let someone else give a public comment. Didn't I have someone in back? Oh. Oh, no, okay.
Hi, I'm Kimber.
Kimber?
I'm Kimber Gomes, I live at 277 Gatesby. Sonia knows me. So I am opposed to the gambling and I think this is a big issue for a very small community, for lots of reasons. Some see this as a business issue, which there is a financial component to it. I mean, nobody can deny that, it is what it is. Some see it as a Republican/Democrat issue. But ultimately, personally, I see it as an identity issue. And who are we? What are we trying to be? And how do we get there? Luckily, we have Riverside's central business plan and our historical legacy to guide us on this. Riverside was built to be a respite from the city, a family-friendly community where one meanders through town while enjoying the lush landscape, beautiful river and historical architecture. And we try to maintain that clearly by the lengths that we go to with our landscapes, by the lengths that we go to with our signage, by the lengths that we go to with our buildings and everything we do architecturally. This village goes to incredible lengths to maintain that. The business plan seems to keep this in mind with its focus on ways to improve our business district while emphasizing the historical significance of Riverside, our connection to nature, proximity to the river and the desire of residents to retain a family-centric community. I just don't see how gambling aligns with that. I'm sure you've heard from residents, you've, you've got 23, was it, letters or 25? You've got several emails or letters or what have you. There's a large contingent this evening, I mean, for this meeting, right? I think you said earlier that you don't usually have this many people here, right? So I'm sure you've heard a lot. Sonia had a great agenda packet. The village did some interviews, which was really nice. So I thought that was good. And I've done a lot of research on this, probably way too much. But there were some interesting data points that I thought I would really like to share with you. For every $1 gambling brings the state, not the local community, so we're not talking Riverside, we're talking the state, taxpayers pay about $3 to address the uptick in addiction, crime and bankruptcy. Those are the social costs. Local communities that allow gambling see a jump of between 18 to 42% in bankruptcies. The social costs again are, the three top social costs are drug addiction, bankruptcies and crime. Academics compare video gambling to drug addiction. It's like cocaine and meth, it's extremely addictive. 20% of video gamblers are addicts. And gambling addicts attempt to kill themselves, about twice the rate of other addictions. You know, this is some really heartbreaking information. In 2015, two of our businesses brought this to our village, indicating that they needed gambling machines to supplement their business or they might need to leave Riverside. But today, both businesses are still here, they're still running, and one of them has even opened a new storefront here in Riverside. He didn't go to Berwyn, he didn't go to Brookfield, he didn't go to Lyons or North Riverside where they allow gambling. He stayed here. So it would seem to imply that his business model is working here in our small community without this. There may have been talk about a level playing field, I think, where the gentleman went. Oh, no, the other gentleman, Lundstrom? Oh, okay. So he had mentioned the late level playing field and that was a big topic back in 2015. I heard it a lot. And I think someone had, was quoted as saying, "To give our existing businesses and prospective businesses competitive equality with surrounding communities." The challenge with that is these kinds of statements makes the assumption that every business in a gambling community has these machines. They don't. Did you know that in Brookfield, 53% of businesses, bars and restaurants that are eligible to have this, do not have them? And, let's see, in North Riverside, that number's about 50%. These businesses are operating successfully in gambling communities without video gambling machines. And gambling machines cannot keep a, a business afloat. Multiple businesses in these communities, in Lyons, North Riverside, Berwyn and Brookfield, have closed. At least one of them, I heard rumors, you know, anecdotally, that they said, yeah, we got these machines, hoping to supplement our business and kind of help us out. And it didn't work. They still closed. So these machines are not this like magic bullet that some people seem to think they are. Now, I support our local businesses and I support us trying to find ways to do that. But I support us doing that in a way that stays true to the character of Riverside. In 2015, Mr. Zimmer from the Choo Choo mentioned something about, and I don't know the name of it, something about a seeding tax or an eating in Riverside tax.
We have a places for eating tax.
Okay, something like that. You know, maybe is there an opportunity to adjust that tax? Maybe is there an opportunity to put a moratorium on that tax? You know, something like that, I don't know. You know, how can we support, you know, Scott and Brian without making such huge sacrifices for our community? It's just not tenable for us. It's just not tenable for us to continue to let our kids ride their bikes down the street to Aunt Diane's or to go get a mystery soda, you know, and all these other things that we really enjoy here in Riverside. And it's a luxury. It's a huge luxury to go by and see all this. All in all, I hope the EDC can find a way to maintain Riverside's character while still staying true to our natural resources and keeping it out of the community. Now, that was my prepared speech. I apologize, I don't care for public speaking. But I did want to speak to some of the things that Minister Lundstrom said. You know, he said, you know, it's the, he called it nimby. And that's kind of true. You know, we kind of don't want it in our backyard. And his point was, it's all around us, you know. It is all around us. So I kind of wonder when I do this, when I think about it, like, okay, it's in Lyons, it's in Brookfield, it's in North Riverside, and it's in Berwyn. The four boundaries, right? I kind of wonder who's really gonna go out through our windy streets when they have it in their own community to find it in ours? Some of these locations, so like you said, all of the reports, all of the financials are available publicly. There were businesses in Berwyn, and I can't remember the other community, that only bring in, there was one business that only, that brought in, two businesses that brought in under $300 a month.
The locations that bring in, we've actually lost money. It's no guarantee that they're gonna make money.
Right, that's my point.
Yeah, there's no, I mean, that's a fact.
And Kimber, I think we're gonna have to start wrapping this up.
Okay. And it's, my last point will be, it's not just a small group of people that don't want it. It is a large group. I mean, we have all these people here on a curriculum night. You know, almost every school in our community, Fenwick, all kinds of schools had curriculum nights. And yet you got all these emails and we have all of these people here. So I just hope you'll take that into consideration when you make, take your vote and make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? I am not going to read all of these 25 letters. Some of them are very long. But I, so I got some of them yesterday. Most of them came in just today. So, but I did summarize the whole gist of all of them and I will give that in my comments after all the commissioners have commented. But just the bottom line, all 25 letters were in opposition of video gaming. And they were all residents with names and addresses in Riverside. I also don't want to lose people's attention for our marketing agency, Amish and Rob, who drove from Milwaukee to get here tonight to talk about our branding efforts. And that has been exciting and wonderful to work with them and good stuff, very interesting stuff. So if there isn't any more public comment, I would like to then get to commissioner discussion. Is everybody ready for that then? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, to the podium, please.
My name is Corey Hoika. I live at 108 Lincoln. There's been several arguments here. I generally don't like gambling. It's not something I'm fond of. I think though, at the same time, one has to be realistic about what actually goes on in the world. You can look at, for example, on iOS or Android, in-app purchases exist where people spend a lot of money. So that's one way that people are gambling in their own community. There's online gambling that people can go to. And so, you know, you're not going to necessarily suppress gambling by denying the gambling machines in these establishments. And I think also it's very important to remember that it's not just serving only the business owners, because these business owners are also serving the community. And they have, you know, some of them are struggling, you know, for various different reasons. But, you know, in some ways, it will help them to provide to us and the community as well. And I think that's a very important thing to take into consideration is that, you know, if, say Molly's closed and someone else wants to look here, are they gonna take into a ban, into account if they decide to open a future business? Or they might be in a position to say, "You know what? I'm better off going down to Berwyn or to Brookfield." Or maybe on Harlem, they may look and say, "You know what? I'm better on the east side of the street than the west side of the street." And I think that's something to take into account as you hopefully go through the decision. Thank you.
To the podium. Even questions are on the podium.
Hi, I'm Nilsa Sweetser, 386 Bartram. And I was just wondering, has every member on the commission gotten copies of those letters or are you just summarizing for them as well? You've all gotten them?
Yeah.
Okay, then I don't need to read mine. Just make sure. Thank you.
Oh, we got lots of information for this meeting. And for last year's informational forum, we got lots of information as well. Any other public comment? Okay.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
First, what is the timeframe? Say we approve it and then the village board approves it. What's the timeframe from yes, it's a go, to getting machines and establishments?
It's 16 to 18 days.
Oh, to the podium.
It's 16 to 18 days, typical application. Any location would have to be approved in front of the Illinois Gaming Board, which have monthly meetings. So they have a meeting in November, they have one in January, one in February. So it'd have to be a monthly gaming board meeting.
So a business that's struggling right now, what month would be? September?
If, let's say you guys happen to allow it at the October meeting, we would try to get Brian approved at the January meeting.
Okay.
That would be our goal.
So a business that's struggling in September is not gonna see any relief from, by the addition of video gaming?
They won't have the machines for three to four months. It's because they have to do the background checks. They actually come out the location, they'll open up every single door, look at every little cranny, look for anything illegal. They're actually gonna come to the village, ask for the village ordinance and everything. So it's a very thorough investigation. That's why it takes 16 to 18 days. At the beginning, it was actually taking eight to 12 months because there are so many locations applying.
I would also imagine that they would have to work with how we're gonna regulate this too.
Sure, right. My other question was, if we approve this and the, you know, it goes through the village, does this open us up as a village to accepting places like Dottie's? Are we, are we then, we've got plenty of empty storefronts in town, do we then allow ourselves to be opened up to gaming parlors? And, you know, at what point is enough is enough? Or new businesses that are coming in, are they allowed to do this? Or are we grandfathering businesses in?
No, as we move forward, the village would have to come up with its specific regulations are going to be. Because we have to rescind an ordinance that we have and then replace it with something new. So we can put in whatever sort of restrictions that we feel are appropriate to it. So we have control and that we grant the liquor licenses. We don't leave open liquor licenses out. So if somebody wants to open a business and get a liquor license, they have to ask for that new liquor license to be created and receive that liquor license. So there is that level of control because you have to have a liquor license in order to be able to do the video gaming. So we can make rules within our ordinance that can, if we want to, say, you know, it's tied to this specific type of liquor license class or, you know, like he said, some other communities say they will only issue the licenses to those businesses that have held a liquor license for two or more years. So those are options that we have and that we can look into in creating restrictions, kind of putting those bumpers, those guards on there to focus this in a way we want to if that is the direction that the village wants to go.
Okay.
So there are options.
Great. Last question. And I lost it. Do you know what it was?
I don't. You didn't write it down?
Hold on. It's coming. Uh, what was my question? I don't know. Go on. Move on. I'll come back to it. Sorry, it's been a long day.
More questions?
Are we in discussion now or are we in...
We're in discussion.
I just keep hearing something about wrong elements in town and I got bad news for you. I'm already here, so you're too late. But we are a unique town. I mean, we're a family-driven town and family values are very high. We have all sorts of things that we have here in town that's not wanted and it's legal. Cigarettes, banned, horrible, causes cancer, and yet we allow the sale of that here in our town. And I hope that our parents in town tell their children how bad smoking is because we aren't hiding it. But eventually, our children will not be. They'll have to be exposed to elements until they make the right decisions as they grow up. I have a compromise I think we can come to. And that is to allow video gaming for a period of three years, unpassionary period. There is no way to tell if this will work in our town or not. I don't want to let it go so it becomes free and we get Dottie's in here. But it's certainly tougher to bring in a new business if it has to keep one. I believe a minimum contract for a community, for a, the sort of stuff is a three-year contract, is that right?
Oh, there's no minimum. No, but actually St. Charles, they're gonna revisit it, I believe, in two years. And they're making every location sign their licenses that they can revoke this and they're now sue the town if they decide to revoke it in two years. So I should add that to St. Charles ordinance, I can give you answers.
So Alex, what's, so, I remembered my question, by the way. But, no, I was gonna ask you, so, okay, so we allow three years. What happens at the end of three years? What are the metrics that you're using to decide?
That will be between the residents and their elected officials and what they want to see in our town. And let the consumers decide.
By what, referendum?
By voicing their opinion, by writing to their trustees, by communication with them.
Isn't that what our community's doing right now though?
No, with the referendum, I think we have.
Is there a petition for a referendum?
We would like to see why.
Because this has been a discussion for about two years.
Well, let's see what's cool.
Well, go out and get one then. That's another way to communicate with the village board. Run a referendum. That can be done by any resident. And I would applaud your efforts. But you can also decide as a community by making the consumer choices. You can decide to go into certain establishments which have gaming or don't. But let the laws of economics determine this and not the government decide what's best for its community.
Well, that's purely our own to decide on the attitude.
We're not having, we're just doing discussion here.
If we were so concerned about this, we should get rid of the sale of cigarettes. We should maybe even close down the swim club because of skin cancer.
Well, let's try to keep this focused.
Residents should have the right to decide that and not government. And that's my position.
Okay. Any other comments?
Not right now. Someone else wants to...
I have a question. So what is the cost of a business? Like, let's say, let's say an idea like this was considered by the board, by the village board. What is the cost of a business to start?
The cost for a location to have machines is $100 per year. Us as the operator, we buy the machines, we bear 100% of the risk. If you guys decide to take it out in three years, there's, he's out with no money at all, we would be out of money. But us as an operator, we take the risk every time we buy the machines, so there's no cost for them.
Well, we could, I mean, like, let's say you required it to be in a separate room or something like, I mean, there's some build-out costs potentially, right?
As far as licensing costs, it's $100. $55 to get fingerprinted. Everything else is paid by the operator.
Wendy, do you have some other comments you'd like to give?
You know, I mean, I, I mean, I've had emails come my way, probably that I don't think have got, I don't see them here. And, you know, I struggle with this as far as, and I think one of the people here that talks mentioned it. I mean, so we're not really approving anything here. We're recommending. So I think you had mentioned we're approving.
Right, no, I meant recommending, right.
It's not really our job here. I mean, we're volunteers to help our businesses and grow and bring in businesses here and as I think Mr. Foley mentioned, you know, help our businesses succeed here. And so, you know, I've actually gone and spoken to all the businesses before this meeting, or not all of them, but the ones that might, would be of the few that could have these or have reached out to some of them. And what I'm hearing from the businesses is that some of them might have them, some of them might not. They don't think, they don't have really a stance of why we shouldn't. They're in support of it, it seems to me, the people that I've spoke, the businesses that I've spoken to. Now, I think the residents that have reached out are, to me, have a different view. I do think, and I think the woman from Gatesby or something had mentioned about the outside, that there's, it's, you know, it's in the communities surrounding us. And I would agree, I don't think that one of, someone had mentioned, I was discussing it today, about a fear of outsiders coming in and being afraid of who's gonna be coming into our town. And personally, that, for me, I'm not sure that's a warranted fear and I'm just kind of, you know, brainstorming my thoughts here. I don't know if that's a warranted fear because I don't see why anyone would come into Riverside for just that purpose when it's available at other places and in their communities probably and where they live. So I don't know if it would be a destination situation. So I think it would be more for the residents of Riverside that are already here, that go out to these places. I do agree that, and I, and I don't know, you know, my other problem is, is that I'm a volunteer on the EDC, I don't know all the numbers, you know, I've read what I've read and I don't know if I personally know enough to, you know, give a good opinion, but my, this is just from my observation. I would think that I would agree with someone else who had mentioned it's mainly the, when I see people at the, at the gamings, like at Connie's or at PJ Clem's or something, it's like the older crowd that has been there for breakfast and they go and are sitting there. I don't see people just coming in for that and then leaving. But that's just me whenever I'm there, so I don't know if I'm not seeing it right. And so, you know, like I see grandparents and other people that might enjoy it, like a couple to go after dinner at the Choo-Choo or going into Molly's. Now, I do agree that we as an EDC might need to do a better job at supporting Molly's and other businesses here. You know, he, the fact that his street has been uprooted for over a year has probably been a very big hardship. And I would like to see, I would like to recommend to the village board that we, that they look at that too, how we can support businesses if that's gonna happen again or how we can do that. And I would like to see if there's a compromise. I mean, I do like, I like your idea of maybe recommending, because I don't think it's our decision. I think the elected officials have to make this decision. I mean, I think they're looking at us for, to kind of weed out some ideas. But ultimately, I would hope everyone here goes to the village board meetings when they are discussing this and writes to the village board. But I also, you know, recommendation of maybe they can discuss an idea of a pilot program of some sort, you know, like, and, you know, I mean, we had the same thing, I don't know, I don't think the picnicking went because people were afraid of outside people coming in and picnicking in our, in our parks. And so, it's, you know, I think we have to come up with, who is our identity? Are we welcoming or are we, is this really something that's going to be, you know, I don't see, we have a signage, we have signage restrictions. I don't see any neon signs coming up or any outside signs. And we can, I believe that if it was approved, we would want to recommend that the village board make regulations towards it to keep our world here as it is. And I think that's possible with restrictions. So, you know, I think it's a compromise that we need to make with the businesses and with our residents. You know, my kids, I hope when they're old enough, they can ride to, up to Aunt Diane's and Riverside Foods. And I don't know if I would be afraid if the Choo-Choo had a one or two of those in, you know, a game machine in there, if I would be more afraid for her to ride because of that or because of just the drivers in Riverside not stopping at stop signs. I mean, you know, I think there's, I think there's, we have to be kind of realistic of some things, of what it is, it's really unsafe, so.
Thanks. Jen?
I'd like to ask Brian a question. In a perfect world, if this were approved, what would you gain, what would you hope to gain within the first 12 months? Like, what is a successful video gaming business to you? What would that be?
I mean, first off, we're an Irish pub. That's why I came to town. It was, it was an Irish pub first and foremost. So we've gotten kind of away from that because of, you know, money restrictions and, you know... And, you know, like I said, it's, past couple of years has been declining rapidly. And I'd like to get back to having music at the pub, you know, which is, we used to have Irish bands play there a lot when we first opened up. And, you know, plus, you know, solo artists and stuff like that, too. I like to do a facade improvement, you know, to, to the place. Have a little bit more of an attraction as an Irish pub to the place. Fixing things, I mean, that's, that's the biggest thing right there. I mean, I have stuff break down on me all the time, I'm buying secondhand equipment and, you know, that's all I can afford. And then it breaks down on me, it costs me thousands and thousands of dollars, you know, so, I mean, it's just, improper air conditioning in the place, having health insurance for my family, you know, there's just, you know, the luxuries, you know.
Nice. I look at this, I mean, it, it's a no-brainer to be against this. It truly is a no-brainer. If you have a family, if you live in town or you moved here because you, you liked the ambiance of Riverside, there is no reason to be for it. But if we're the Economic Development Commission and this is our job, I also started looking back to 2007, 2010, you know, when Chuchu closed in the arcade building and we had nowhere to go to eat. We had nothing. Downtown was a ghost town. Molly's wasn't open yet. The, the people who lived here back then, if you remember those times, we would, you know, not kill, but we would have loved to have had a couple of restaurants to go to to eat dinner or a nice Irish pub to go to to knock back a couple of beers, you know, with friends before you go home. So now that we have those places, it's almost like we've, we've sat back and said, oh, we've got it so good, we don't even realize it. So if, if a business is on the edge, and I'm a small businessman, and, and I remember, I've been at that point where any money that comes in is going to fix things that you, you waited to fix, you know, the months or years before. So it's not like he's expecting to just get this windfall and suddenly walk away with bigger profits. It would be reinvested. And I can't speak for every person who wrote the letter, so I can speak for myself as a father and as a man who moved here 14 years ago and expects to be here for a lot more. I'm against it on the idea of just what video gaming is. But I think we really have to take a look at, how could that affect the fabric of the town if these businesses did go away because of it or were forced to close because they couldn't make ends meet or there was a better offer in another town? Or the next business that we want to open chooses not to come here because another town is more desirable? So these are all factors that we have to take into account. And, you know, a couple of the comments that, that people made, I agree with you, it could change the fabric of the town, but it also might not. You know, it, it might have no effect at all. It might just be, you know, some of the, the people from town that instead of going over to Lyons or to Berwin to spend some money video gaming, maybe they stay here locally. Or maybe it just kind of assimilates itself into our existence and doesn't affect anybody's life negatively. So we have to weigh all of this before deciding on it. And whether it's a referendum or whether it's, we make our, our suggestion to the, the trustees and then they decide, I do think we all have to look at this as, as a bigger picture and not just automatically be against, because it's very easy to do that. But there is, there is a lot more to this, if you step back from it, that, that has a lot to do with people and their livelihoods and people and, and what they want and what we have now and didn't have five and 10 years ago in this town. And so I just ask that we all consider that, you know, however you vote is how you vote, but just consider that before you, you vote on this.
Well, and to your point, you know, you said 2007, there was nothing here. 10 years ago, there was nothing here. So what, if this does get approved, what does the town look like in 10 years? What does Molly's look like in 10 years? So I remembered my question. It came to me. So back in 2015, we had, Scott was here representing Chuchu, and he spoke very impassioned lead by, about this very topic. And now I have not heard too much from him regarding this, in, in this current conversation that we're having. Does anybody know if he's still interested in having this?
He has no plans either way.
He has no plans either way. And he hasn't approached us for the board. Okay. It's interesting to see that there's a, a change in tone there then, you know, and, and why is that? Not just picking out Scott, but if other business owners were interested in it two years ago, why aren't they now?
Well, yeah, after the March 22 forum in 2016, yeah, there was no
Yeah.
request to pursue it. So we did it.
Yeah, sure. Right, right.
Can I suggest that it's possible that business owners didn't realize that this became the third rail locally and to be for something that they found so many residents was against, they thought might hurt their business.
Sure.
So just, that's something to consider as well.
Yeah, for sure.
When I would say that, of the ones that I did, was able to speak with, like I said, some said they wouldn't, at, at the moment, don't have any plans of doing it, but that it would be nice to have that option if it were, you know, available. And, you know, and I think that goes back to the, to the point of if the, if the village trustees do grant it in some way or something, I mean, I think that, or through a referendum, maybe the village does too, that there is ways to control it. I mean, this isn't a free-for-all. So it's up to our village then to create the, the rules and regulations for this policy. I mean, as you were saying, I mean, I was, I've, obviously, I've been here for a while now. I got away and then I got back. But, you know, when I grew up, this was a dry town. There was not liquor. You couldn't have a beer anywhere in Riverside, you had to go out, out. And when that changed, when that was, I remember when that was, I was little, but when that was going on, we had, it was, I kind of remember the same, the same kind of talk as far as we're going to ruin Riverside and the bad elements are going to come and start drinking and shoot, like, because when Scott opened, he was the first one, I believe, to be granted a liquor license. It was like, and so there was people up until that time that really were scared about giving anyone a liquor license here in Riverside. And then Scott opened and it was, I mean, everyone was ecstatic, I mean, everyone loved it. So, you know, I think there's regulation, we can, we can control it, is what I kind of, is what I would suggest if we do recommend. I would, I would recommend to, if, if it is a recommendation, to recommend that they, they create some way of attest market of some sort and then some good regulations that keep our, our downtown business how we want it.
Okay. Keith, can we hear from you?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I think it's kind of interesting, you know, we have our, you know, marketing folks here, right, I mean, our advertising agency, you know, for this conversation, right? Because I think, I mean, really, to me at least, it, it kind of comes down to brand and identity and what is our identity. And, you know, I guess, you know, I'm just kind of looking at, you know, the communities that do and the communities that don't, right? And so if you look at the list, right, that you provided, I mean, the ones that are around here that don't are Oak Park, River Forest, La Grange, a lot of places that I think, you know, at least in my mind, those are the communities that I kind of look at as being comparable, you know, towns to, to Riverside and that, that I would like us to kind of, you know, kind of stay within that path. And I guess that's, I mean, I'm not saying that I, I, I'm, you know, against supporting our, our, our local businesses, but I guess to me, that's the, ultimately, you know, I keep, I, I've gone around in this a lot. And that's kind of where I just keep ending up is just right at, you know, what is our identity, you know, as, you know, as the community of Riverside? And I think, you know, we talk about losing businesses, but ultimately, you know, I think if we create the right identity, we're going to gain the businesses that we want versus just ones to fill the spaces. You know, I, I, I don't know, I, I think the longer-term view is to, you know, really identify if, you know, this is really what our identity is. And I, I just don't think that it is, to be honest.
Kate? More comments from you? I've always got comments, come on! You had questions before, now comments. Um, I, like Keith, have gone around and around and around. And I too, I, I wholeheartedly agree with you that it really comes back to what does our village stand for and what is our brand, which I, I, I quarrel with that word a little bit, but I'm kind of a word-persnickety person, so. But is it part of our culture, I think, is better than our brands? Is it something that is going to benefit the, the, the community as a whole? Or is it going to be, benefit a small group of the community? And I am leaning towards also not being in favor of it. I think one of the things that, that struck me when we were looking through the towns and what other towns have done is Galena in particular. We've had a family home in Galena for, let's see, 37 years. And so I've, you know, that's my second home, I grew up there. And I think this, this line really jumps out at me. Galena, if nobody knows it, is Riverside just at the Iowa border. It's tiny, they've got a lot more commerce than we do, but it's a tiny little historic, beautiful, bucolic, lovely, lovely town. And I think what pops out to me the most is this line that says, some of the nicer fine dining restaurants that had gaming terminals have since removed them from their restaurants after they found that it did not work with their business model and/or interfered with their business more than it helped. And I think that that's the part that I've been struggling with, are, is it going to be a long-term help to Molly's and to Brian? And I'm a business owner, too, I completely sympathize with trying to pay health insurance. Or is it going to be a flash in the pan? And then Brian's, you know, got three, four months of great revenue and then it just dies? And then kind of where are we at? So that's what stuck out at me. And I agree with Keith.
My turn?
Brian, your turn.
I'll be short. So I definitely see the argument from, from both sides. And I think the way that I've tried to evaluate it is as my role as a commissioner, not me as a resident. And I think if we were to vote tonight as a commission for either a yes or a no as a recommendation, that I'd be uncomfortable with that. So I think the word compromise has been brought up a couple of times. I also thought the point was well-received before of that, you know, we are not elected officials, we are appointed to, to this committee. And I think that, that that's something that, that I take to heart, too, of that I don't feel this is really my decision to make, that it's our decision to make. Obviously, we're not making the decision, we're just providing a recommendation. But in terms of what I'd be comfortable recommending to the village board, it would be that, you know, this shouldn't be the beginning or the end of it, this should be the start of, to see if there's a compromise that can work, that works for enough of our residents that they're comfortable with it, but is also still beneficial to our business owners, because I think it's been brought up a couple of times that, you know, we should look for other ways to help them out. Well, I think business owners are coming to us and saying, this is a way that we can help them out. So I think we owe it to them to kind of consider that.
Any other comments before I comment?
I gathered some of my comments from the comments that were sent to me. In the last year and the last month and a half, when we had to revisit it, I've spent, I cannot count how many hours I have spent researching this topic because I did not know a lot about this topic. Video gaming, gambling. I also have spent countless hours working on marketing as well, so that we would lay our groundwork for marketing communications of Riverside. As a result of all the data and research that I've gathered, first and foremost, I find video gambling slash gaming off-brand. It's not found in any of our resident, agency, or commissioner discussions pertaining to village personality or brand positioning. Video gaming may be financially lucrative for a business owner and the terminal operator. They split about 70% of the revenue of gambling, and the revenue is otherwise known as gambling losses. But the municipality gets 5% and the state receives the remaining 25% of the losses slash revenue. The municipality bears the negative cost, of which it is difficult to forecast, but only receives 5% of the revenues. For $1 million of revenue of losses, Riverside would get $50,000. So if we would manage to get $1 million in revenue, you know, if the terminals get $1 million in revenue, the, the terminal operator and the establishment get 70% of that, we get 5%, which would be $50,000. Video gambling is also unfair to businesses who can't have a liquor license. I also received those comments as well, that it's not a level playing field for other business operators because they can't have a liquor license in their establishments. Not having video gaming might be seen as a competitive disadvantage to business owners, but to others, it could be seen as a competitive advantage. All towns have advantages and disadvantages. We've been using our long-term competitive advantages while developing our branding. And I can give a lecture on our long-term competitive advantages at a different meeting, but there are many towns that would love to have our competitive advantages. We know we have disadvantages here in Riverside, but we also have a lot of competitive advantages as well. And that's one of the reasons why we've been working on marketing communications, because we want to lay the groundwork to get that story out. I'm also concerned about the methods of terminal operators. Companies can data-mind credit card companies to induce visits to these establishments, even marketing to those who are not supposed to be marketed to. These are not the machines of an earlier era. These machines are engineered to encourage, sustain, and exploit customer behavior. They use computer algorithms to modify behavior, for example, giving false wins and near misses to hook the consumer into losing more money. For all the years that I've been on the EDC, no resident, or for that matter, no one, has requested for me to work on this topic, video gambling, until now. They've told me plenty of other things to work on, but not this one. So I think in summation to all that, you know how I would vote on the recommendation. So I think we've heard from all commissioners, have we heard from all commissioner comments? Does someone want to motion on the EDC recommendation to allow video gaming slash gambling in Riverside? So we can then take that recommendation to the board?
So is, is the only choice, is this a straight yes or no vote? Is that what we're going with?
Yes. If you would vote yes, you would be voting to recommend to the board that they allow gambling. Now, we can...
But, no, I'm sorry, that was, I'm sorry, no, I, I was asking more, in other words, is that have to be how we structure? You know what I mean? Because I think a lot of the things that were brought up...
That was the request they asked of us.
Sure, gotcha.
Can we change that? Can we amend that?
You can work through it how you need to work through it.
I mean, I, I, I think Brian has mentioned some things and you guys have mentioned, I mean, that it would be nice if we, if we could put our, as we've done in previous topics, put our recommendations of, of, to the board of, you know, how we might suggest that they examine it, or, you know, what kinds of things we would like them to, to discuss and think of as well.
I mean, nobody on the commission really, oh, I'm sorry. That was great, that was interesting, Keith. I just wanted to speak to that. I think the board is looking for a direction from you, one way or the other. With that said, I think we would love to have suggestions for how you would implement that. So it's a, in my mind, what I thought we were looking for is a yes or a no. Do we want to pursue, pursue having the ordinance changed? And if that's the case, if you're going to recommend for that, absolutely, we would want suggestions for how you might limit that in an ordinance or put limitations on and whatnot. So we're looking for an opinion, but also additional, any additional measures or details that you would want, that you would think would be relevant for this whole process and the ordinance, we would want to see that as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, okay, did we get that rephrasing then? So rather than recommending...
So rather than recommending, or as the request I got, rather than, um, an approval to recommend or not to allow gambling, we are voting, you would like, you said we could pursue whether we should allow a continuing of the discussion? Oh, no. Okay, what?
No, I think she's saying the commission, and the board is looking for the commission to take a stance one way or the other. Yes, allow it, but only under these circumstances. If that's how you feel, or no, it's a non-starter, just no. I think they want that clear definition.
That's what I thought. Okay.
You know, if your yes, if your yes is with conditions, then with conditions. Or if you're no, this is just a non-starter, then, then your recommendation is no, we need to keep things as they are. I think, you know, so that's providing them with the direction that they need. So I think that's, am I summarizing okay there?
Yes. Thank you.
All right. Are we ready for that motion?
Sure.
What's the exact wording of the motion? Yes, what recommendations or no?
I mean, that's, if you want to make the motion, yes.
Are we going to recommend those recommendations? Limits except, right? Okay, I'm making my motion of, uh, that we recommend a yes with certain conditions.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Brian, second?
Discussion?
Is there any further discussion?
Are we voting on that?
We are.
I would vote on that as well. I would vote to, to say yes, that the village trustees should continue, or should, um, for, for it to be, um, examined by the board with conditions.
Do you want me to just go through the roll call?
Yes. I was going to just say just further roll call.
So I don't forget Keith again. I apologize. All right, so, Commissioner Bushell?
I vote no.
Okay, Commissioner Gallegos?
Aye.
All right, Commissioner Plame?
Uh, yes, with conditions.
Okay. Commissioner Coffey?
No.
Okay, Commissioner Doctor?
Yes, with conditions.
And Commissioner Vaughn?
No.
And Chairperson Hrusse?
Um, no.
So that is one, two, three. Did I miss one? Is that good?
I think it's four, three.
Four, three, to allow. No, I put somebody on the wrong side, I'm sorry.
To not recommend.
Okay, I have a-
Wendy, yes.
Yes.
Jack, no.
Jack, no. Elek, yes. Brian?
Yes.
Yes.
Kate, no.
Kate, no. Oh, I'm sorry, I wrote down Wendy twice.
Okay.
How?
Okay.
So the no's happened.
I learned early, vote twice.
I had you voting twice, Wendy.
I did, I wrote Wendy down twice this morning, so.
Um, I have four no votes and three yes votes.
So the motion fails to pass.
All right.
Now, do we know what the chamber has, has recommended?
Um, the chamber was also asked-
They were supposed to recommend. Do we know what they recommended?
They will meet next Tuesday.
Yeah, their meeting.
Chamber?
The chamber meeting is next Tuesday night. Okay, I think we're done with that agenda item, and I think we're on to our very patient marketing agency. Don't all leave, this is interesting.
All right, we get to talk about branding.
You guys, I'm, and I'm, I won't be rude, but I'm going to have to leave in a little bit, so I'm sorry. I'm just going to walk out. Well, that's the problem, like-
We have a brand! What is it? Here it is. No, I know.
This is what we geek out on.
I'm having some technical difficulties, I could not forward.
Well, Riverside, Riverside TV will be filming all this, so they can see it from the comfort of their home. Although it looks better in person.
That's the right one? Okay. Yep.
There's a lot of our agenda information we're reading there.
Hamish?
Okay.
So, forward, forward, backward, and this is laser pointer.
Oh, excellent.
This conversation will be nearly as stimulating, and hopefully not nearly as controversial. So my understanding tonight is we just want to review the evolution of, of our branding process and how it got to where we are currently, right? Many of you were involved with that process, uh, but, so I'll, I'll keep things truncated. Feel free to, to ask questions if you want more detail. The first step, which isn't shown here, is a process we undertook called our Point A Brand Discovery Process, in which we went through a series of exercises to better understand what the, the Riverside brand was. Those, uh, those exercises looked at, uh, brand personality, uh, looked at our, um, how we compared ourselves to neighboring and other area communities, uh, evaluated who our constituents that might be looking to receive our message are, and how we want to, you know, weight, uh, uh, those, those various audiences. Ultimately, we got down to a couple of really important points. Our LTSCAs, Long-Term Sustainable Competitive Advantages, um, which, which were the three primary brand pillars, in which we all agreed Riverside holds and can hold for an indefinite period of time. And then we got to positioning statements and a brand manifesto as well. So, and then information has been published and is available to review. We have it here if anyone wants to drill down into that.
Do, has that, has that document been-
Yes, all the commissioners, all the commissioners have it, board members have it, so we've put it on the website.
It's just, it's very important as you are, um, going through the articulation process and just so that, that people have a good understanding, um, that this isn't just a much a presentation, it's actually a quite strategic process, a lot of tool into it, from a brand discovery as well.
So, uh, from there, we went to, uh, from our, from our Point A Brand Discovery Process, we went through a brand articulation in which we presented, um, a few concepts for evaluation, and there's a lot of discussion around those concepts. Um, and, and this, uh, this concept that we're going to share with you was what was settled on. So this is what that brand articulation looked like, if you wanted to click your clicker. Um, and Hamish is going to read this, because my eyes are terrible and his voice is much cooler.
When you cross the border with Riverside, you immediately realize you're not just entering out of town, you're entered and you're waiting to be in. It's a town created not just as a place to live, but as a place to live and harmony with the world around you. When even the streets curve and meander, inviting you to slow down and enjoy the beauty that lies all around. In Riverside, life isn't made out in standard grids, but in measurable opportunities for you, your family, and your business. Here, you don't have to imagine the possibilities. You can live them. Get off the grid.
That was well done. So this is, before we click, you know, this is, this really embodied so much of the things that we talked about in our brand discovery process. The extremely unique nature of the deliberate architecture of Riverside. The fact that quite literally, we break up what is a very linear, uh, right angular grid with our curved and meandering streets. Um, so when you pass through Riverside, you are in the most literal of senses getting off the grid. But also, from a mindset perspective, you are able to, because of the way the village was designed, slow down, um, enjoy your surroundings, uh, be in an area that focuses on, uh, nature, the flowing path of a river, um, streets that people don't, uh, that have no stoplights, um, and, and a, um, a town experience that's, uh, really charming and very special compared to the areas around us. So that's everything that this concept embodies, and here's how it looked. Um, so there's several headlines that we, we picked, so this is our, kind of our one ad, uh, "You love what you do, now love where you do it." Um, and so this is obviously a more built, business development-focused message. Some of the cornerstones that you see in what we developed here, most importantly, is pieces, uh, that seem to be taken directly from Olmstead's map, um, of our very curvy streets, um, and, and then they're filled, of course, with our downtown area, um, and our very renowned water town. So, um, the next creative kind of shows how other, um, how other creative might look. Follow your own road to success, get off the grid. So we're also encouraging prospective, uh, business, uh, owners to, when they're considering our community, to say, "Look, this is, don't, don't follow a typical path. This is a great place to be with a community that would really attach themselves to you in a significant way. It's something different and special." And then, uh, this one is, "You've never been one to follow the crowd, get off the grid." You know, this is a, a, a potential barber. So, so, um, and I think, what's the next slide? This is the, the grouping as a whole. So based on, uh, so this is the concept that was chosen, and then based on, um, this chosen concept, there were some questions about what kind of modifications could be made, um, to evolve the concept. They had a lot to do with how we showed, uh, some of the imagery and where the curves were. So this is an evolution of that exploration, where we shared, um, a kind of, a variety of tweaks and changes to this concept. This is the original, uh, again. And then here is some, um, here are some different ways to look at this. So one was a, an evaluation of different ways to handle this meandering, uh, the meandering curves. Uh, so you can see, you know, one focuses on these things throughout the ad, on the left side, one draws a hard clean line, it just has the curving lines up top, and another one simplifies the whole process and gives an anchoring bar at the bottom. And then we also looked at typography. So here's one typographic treatment, uh, but there's also, you know, other ways that we looked at handling some of the display faces that we used. I think that's in the next one. Yeah, so a different, this, this, different, that was some different typography, this is a different ways to treat the, um, after additional feedback, to treat the bottom. So if you can go back for a second. So this is what we shared. We got feedback, the kind of people expressed, "We really like what's going on with that, the bottom anchor on the right-hand side. We don't want to move too far away from the original concept, which is more along the lines of the left hand, but we like the original typeface it was used." So the, the next set of things drilled down a little bit further, we're back to the original typeface. We have this anchoring bar at the bottom, um, which is Riverside URL, and I put the, and I can't see anything else, forget what it is. Uh, "Learn more at," I believe is what it says. And then what's the next? And then these are just other explorations of how to handle this bottom anchoring bar. People had different feelings. So this is where we are right now. Uh, so you have kind of a, a, a bar that anchors the bottom, but not in a heavy fashion. We remove the, the swirvy line, um, and then we have kind of a, a spectrum of color along the bottom. So this is where we are right now, um, and, and then I don't, I, I don't know how that relates to where you are in your decision-making process right now.
So I think this was sent out to you guys, uh, about two weeks ago, for you guys to try and look through, get your feedback. Um, and at this point, what we're looking for is, are we at, are we comfortable enough with this concept to make that formal recommendation to the village board that this is how we want to move forward? If we're ready to do that, we get this to the village board, then that allows Point B then to continue on with the rest of the marketing plan, because this informs the next step. So we have to settle this for them to move on. So, you know, I, some of the feed, most of the feedback that I got back was, was very small stuff, and mostly centered on photography and the pictures that are used, which is something that we can deal with moving forward. Obviously, we want to move away from stock photography, we want to, you know, get together a collection of pictures that will be usable for these things, and we can kind of talk about what kind of pictures we want to see, and, and work that into, into budget numbers and, and everything moving forward. So these aren't necessarily the pictures that are going to end up being on whatever advertising we choose to do. This is just supposed to be kind of representative for us to get an idea of how it comes together. So, um, you know, given the layouts of the font, the idea behind it, are we, is the commission comfortable making this recommendation, this is the concept we want, the brand concept we want to move forward to, make that recommendation to the board, get their buy-in, and then we can then give Point B the go-ahead to move into the rest of the marketing plan, um, to give, to, to build that out and give us the strategies that we need, um, on how we, how we kind of push this out. How does this play out? Who do we, who do we market to? Those kinds of things. I, they can obviously speak more than that than I can, being the professionals, but-
That was really well said.
I would say, I mean, at some point, I'd say, "Let's go and let's move on." So I would, I mean, I think it's great, my, my recommendation would be yes, let's present this to the board and move to the next step. I think you guys have done a great job, and, um, it's, I love it, so.
It's just interesting how we, you know, we started with your design, we thought, oh, we'll change this, change that, and then we end up-
You probably see all the time.
-coming right back to, right? We've done this for a while.
But this, I think this could be an easy decision, quick and-
But we also looked at several of their concepts and zeroed in on this concept, and, um, then we started tweaking it at the last meeting, too.
And one thing I think it's really important to note, uh, whatever you end up ratifying, you know, we, we designed these things, uh, with flexibility, and we don't really fully discover the full capabilities of the brand until we do start implementing it, uh, in a go-to-market strategy. So, um, we are really, in my opinion, approving this conceptually, but there's, there's still-
Fluid.
Yeah, it is indeed fluid. Um, and for that reason, we develop brand guidelines very often, and we don't recommend developing a hard guideline until we've been able to use the brand for at least three to six months, because we learn things about, about the brand and utilization that we just can't know in this kind of isolated environment.
Yeah, I'm new to this game, but this, uh, "Get off the grid," um, just popped out at me, it's so smart. It's, it's like exactly what this town is. Yeah, really good job. I own a business too, and I'm, I struggle with branding myself. So when, I was like, "Oh, that's really good." I have to talk to you afterwards. No, I'm kidding. Yeah, no, 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 we're good, we're good, we're good, I'm good, I'm good, yeah.
Well, in looking at, um, other municipality marketing efforts or whatever, this is different.
Yeah.
You know, some of our other concepts were wonderful, but some of them were, you know, at least I can think of one of them was very similar to other concepts that you might see in any other municipality, you know?
Berwin had a, Berwin had a really strong one a few years ago. Excellent.
And we want people to stop and, and, you know, if we get a couple seconds of attention, that'd be great.
Yes, right.
But, um, just, what did they mean by "get off the grid"? You know, you can interpret that in many ways, you know? Um, so that's what we want to do. And it is, it's different, it's unusual, it's aspirational, it's beautiful, um, very much like our town. So, um, I, I'm ready to move forward with this as, as well, um, and I, and I understand the process. We're going to be working with you for months, tweaking and all kinds of things. So this isn't a, you know, this isn't in the bag or whatever.
It's a beginning.
I'm so happy about that.
This is a journey.
You also check gambling, I guess, then.
This is definitely a journey. More comments that you'd like to, to share?
I mean, I still like the first one, but this is good too.
It's interesting, it's, it's warm, I've warmed up to this one, actually. It wasn't completely sold, but over time, it's kind of, it's grown up.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think in general, I think just the general comments across, I, I think I can talk for everyone. I think, you know, the idea of-
Okay, I'll let Sonia do a roll call vote then.
Okay. So a motion to recommend this branding to the village board. So we have Commissioner Bushel?
Yes.
Commissioner Gallegos?
Aye.
Commissioner Plain?
Yes.
Commissioner Coffey?
Yes.
Commissioner Draper?
Yes.
And Commissioner Plummer?
Yes.
And Chairperson Harst?
Yes.
All a一致. Unanimous. All right. Thank you, guys.
We made it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you so much.
You are so kind, too, and so patient.
Yeah. We deserve never to be late again.
I thought I had them to see your presentation. I thought, sure, they were going to see your presentation in person, but they'll watch from home. They'll watch it. They'll see it.
They're on the TV right now.
Great.
Or perhaps they'll go to the board meeting and see it at the board meeting, but it's been great working with you.
Oh, you guys have been great.
Really.
And we're looking forward to what's to come.
Good stuff.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Is there any other new business before we go on to informational items?
And I'm sorry, I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to leave. I'm way late.
No.
Bye, you guys.
I know, right? We're got the meat of the meeting. Any other new business? Okay. Sonia, did you want to mention anything about that informational item, the downtown idea?
I'm sorry, I've been at a conference this week, so I didn't get a chance. There was a couple of articles that I thought were interesting, so I will get those scanned in and emailed over to you guys. There was one on branding and stuff, so I'll get that over to you. The other informational item, I think I forwarded to all of you, that Commissioner Gallegos reached out to the zoo about the signage over the... No, you didn't?
Mr. Gallegos, my dad.
Oh, shit!
It's all right.
Excuse me.
Reached out to the zoo, and so it sounds like they are interested in trying to partner with us in doing some sort of signage on the bridge if we can move forward with that. So hopefully, we can kind of talk through that at the next regular meeting, and then see what kind of hurdles we need to get through, since it is a railroad bridge.
Not our property.
We do have to get BNSF involved at some point, and I will work with the village manager and the public works director on that, because we've had to deal with them for a lot of other things. So I'm sure we have contacts, and we'll, we'll get that, get that figured out. But thank you for reaching out to them, and we will definitely discuss that at the upcoming meeting.
Okay.
Okay? And if we want to, we can always see if, you know, Point B wants to weigh in on...
Design.
How to incorporate our branding into it if we need, if we need to, if that's the way we want to go.
That was just their logo coming in.
Oh, yeah.
We'll probably have our own seal on there instead of the water tower that they put up there.
Right. So, you know, kind of trying to see how we can blend the zoo branding with our branding to make something that looks pretty cohesive.
So look at us, we're co-branding now.
Co-branding.
Moving to the next level.
So we still have...
So next level, yeah.
So I didn't, I didn't see the, we're on the second Thursday. What's the number date in November for that meeting?
All right. That's a good question. Should be. Month? Sorry.
Yes, our next meeting is November 8th, so we'll be discussing our research on that item and...
Are you sure it's not the 9th?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's the 9th.
Yes.
November 9th. So we'll be discussing that more, what, what we find out in the meantime.
All right. And this recommendation on the branding, we're going to try and get it on one of the October agendas for the village board, and then once the village board gives it their blessing, then we'll get Point B to work on that, and maybe they'll have something for us to start looking at at that November meeting as well, so.
So Sonia will let us know when that's being talked about as well, November, or in the October.
The October.
All right. Anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Alex, second.
All in favor?
Those opposed? Motion is adjourned.
Thank you.
See you.